All right, everyone, welcome. I would like to call to order the September 27th, 2022 meeting of the Planning Board. Before the meeting begins, I ask everyone present to silence their cellphones and note that this meeting is being recorded. Karen, could you call the roll, please?
Jim Callahan.
Here.
Bob Doherty.
Here.
Kevin Donovan.
Here.
David Edmonds.
Here.
Carolyn Turner.
Here.
Mike Ventreska, absent. Chair Claudia Bogan.
Here. Under public hearings, the first item on the agenda is Public Hearing Continued: Special Permit/Site Plan Review, Application to Authorize Light Manufacturing Use of Approximately 33,514 Square Feet Within a New Two-Story Building Containing Approximately 133,738 Square Feet of Net Floor Area at 216 New Boston Street, CCF New Boston Property Company, LLC. Attorney Tarby, welcome.
Okay, for the record, Attorney Joseph Tabby, Ruben Redman, 500 Unicorn Park Drive in Woburn here on behalf of the petitioner. We'd like to make a brief presentation tonight, more of an update to the Planning Board, since the peer review process is still ongoing. We gave same update to the City Council's Special Permits Committee meeting last night, and then we'd ask that the public hearing be further continued to October 11th. So just to refresh your memory, the petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow for a two-story building containing approximately 133,738 Square Feet of net floor area with the following uses: light manufacturing, approximately 33,514 Square Feet, which requires a special permit from the Planning Board; office, approximately 39,229 Square Feet, a City Council special permit; and lab use of approximately 58,845 Square Feet, also a City Council special permit. In addition, we're looking for a special permit to park approximately 92 vehicles on the adjacent lot of 225 Merrimack Street, which is also a City Council special permit. Both special permit requests are currently still before the City Council, pending completion of the peer review process. As you'll hear in a couple of seconds, we've completed our end, we're just waiting for responses from the peer reviews. So back, we had, I think, the first public hearing with the Planning Board, this is how far back this goes, in June, I believe June 7th or June 14th, we had a public hearing. At the City Council public hearing, the council voted to authorize the city solicitor and city engineer to proceed forward with peer reviews on traffic. City retained World Tech Engineering, stormwater. The city retained Horsey Whitten, and then water and sewer systems, the city retained environmental partners. So that process is ongoing, and we wanted to, since it's been so long since June, we wanted to provide the Planning Board with an update of where we are in terms of some minor site plan revisions, as well as an update on where we are with the traffic. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Nick Delacava of Allen &amp; Major, and he'll be followed by Scott Thornton of Van Assen Associates. So, Nick.
I do have some handouts. You want to walk them through?
Sure. Motion to accept.
Second.
Second. All in favor? All in, one, two, three, four. Six in favor and none opposed. Sir, is this the same presentation that's on my?
That's correct, yeah. It's just a blow up so you can see some of the plans a little bit easier.
No worries, then I'll stay here.
For the record, again, my name is Nick Delacava with Allen &amp; Major Associates, here tonight on behalf of the applicant to go over some of the plan updates that we've made as a result from some of the letters we received from department heads, as well as the peer review consultants. So we did receive comment letters from the Woburn Planning Department, Port of Health, Fire Department, and three peer review consultants, as Joe mentioned. Environmental Partners reviewed water and sewer. Horsey Whitten Group reviewed the stormwater, and World Tech reviewed traffic. We've since submitted updated plans, drainage report and response memo on September 2nd, which we believe addresses all comments received to date. The 16-page memo provides a detailed response for all comments, though the majority of comments are general, requiring only minor amendments to the design plans and drainage report, or submission of supplemental information, all of which was included in the September 2nd submission. The overall design, including site, building layout, and stormwater management, remain unchanged from what's been discussed previously. We have filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. That process is ongoing, also pending peer review. So in the essence of time, I won't go through each and every comment, but rather focus on the primary updates made to the plan since our last meeting. But certainly, if there are specific comments in the peer review response memo that we submitted that you'd like to discuss, I can walk through them with you. So as for water, in coordination with the city engineering and water department, we've upsized the water line to an eight-inch service with a loop connection around the site at three locations. We'll be connecting to the 12-inch main on New Boston Street at two locations with an eight-inch and a six-inch service. And a third connection is going to be made to an eight-inch line that currently runs down the Rumford Avenue paper street and onto our property. That connection will be made on our property, not within the right-of-way. For sewer, previous design utilized an existing 15-inch clay service that runs into the site. The revised design proposes a direct connection to the municipal sewer manhole in New Boston Street. That was as a result from comments we received from the engineering department. Sewer profiles for all proposed services have been added to the plan set as a result of a comment we got from environmental partners. The design, although, does remain unchanged. For drain, based on comments from the peer review consultant, a few minor discrepancies between the design plans, details, and hydroCAD model have been addressed. We believe all updates to the stormwater management system were insignificant, resulting in a net zero change to the system layout and design from what's been presented to There is, so I'll go over this utility plan. This just shows in red the water line, the two callouts in red along New Boston, that's where we're going to be making the eight-inch and six-inch connections. And then you can see it loops around the entire site and connects to the eight-inch existing service that runs in from Rumford Avenue at the bottom of the plan. So there is some ongoing coordination happening behind the scenes. The city will require a portion of the municipal sewer to be cleaned and inspected with CCTV and flow monitoring. We are currently finalizing the scope of this work with the Woburn Engineering Department and DPW, and will provide documentation and findings to the city once that work is complete. We have received multiple comments requesting detailed subsurface site investigations for the property, given the site's history and proximity to the industry-plecked Superfund site. We are aware of the site's history of use, past investigations, and response actions by the EPA, and of the NAU wells recorded for the property in 2020. The work conducted at the property will be conducted in accordance with the NAU wells, and a proposed subsurface investigation work plan was submitted to the EPA for review and approval on May 20th of this year. The subsurface investigations, including test borings, test pits, observation wells, and testing of soil and groundwater samples, will be conducted following that EPA approval. We are prepared to address any forthcoming comments from the city department heads or peer review consultants in response to our September 2nd submission, and will provide any additional details and information as needed at that time. So with that being said, I'd like to hand it off to Scott Thornton with Van Assen Associates to give you an update on traffic.
Thank you, Nick. For the record, Scott Thornton with Van Assen Associates. We prepared the traffic assessment for the project, and I'll also just give you an update of where we stand in relation to the overall process. We prepared the traffic study earlier this year, was submitted to J. Corey, city engineer, and the World Tech peer review for traffic about the middle of May. We received some initial comments back from World Tech over the summer. We provided a response letter to those comments September 1st, and we're waiting for follow-up peer review comments to come back from World Tech, and also for the city engineer to issue his follow-up memo. In terms of the comments on the traffic study, the fundamentals were, we were in agreement with, World Tech was in agreement with the way that we prepared the traffic study. They had some comments related to some of the signage on sites, wayfinding signage, also some issues with queuing on New Boston Street, and that some other comments regarding the operations at the intersection of Commerce Way with Atlantic Ave and the 93 ramps. And, you know, we addressed those comments in our letter of September 1st, and we're just waiting for feedback from them to close out that issue. So that's it for traffic for the update. If you have any questions, I'll be here to answer them. Otherwise, I'll turn it back over to Joe. Thank you.
That's our update for this evening. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
All right. Does any board member have any questions for the applicant? Jim, go right ahead.
For the traffic engineer, please. The proximity for Commerce Way and Atlantic Ave, the location of this site, what's that distance via the roadway?
From this site to Commerce Way?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would have to measure, but it's probably, it's probably at least a mile or so.
At least a mile. And the intersection of Eames and Woburn?
That's further, further north up New Boston Street.
What's the distance?
Much closer. Again, I don't have that in front of me.
So in your earlier presentation, you voiced my concern about it, and I think you got direction from the city engineer for what to be included. That being a major intersection coming through the industrial park leading into New Boston once that bridge is reopened, why was that not evaluated? That, and also Eames and Main.
These are locations in Wilmington.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, you know, we looked at the study area that has been reviewed for other projects on New Boston Street, and I would say that with increasing distance, the impact of the project reduces, or is felt less. At the intersection, we did go up into Wilmington to review the intersection of Woburn with 129, and did not have a significant impact there. So if we, I would not expect that we would have a large impact at Eames and Woburn, and I would also say that the peer reviewer did not comment and did not request that location to be included in the study.
Just, again, a little bit of a fuddle, you reference an intersection on Commerce Way that's pretty much out of the way, whichever way you go, north or south, from this project. And the major intersection coming from the north side, now that the new bridge is going to be open, I don't think that was considered in the previous applications or a reference that gave you the avenue to follow for your traffic study. So there was no bridge to consider. It's been talked about for 35, 40 years. Finally, you came and get put out in the street, but now that it's in the works, you had to consider a few other development. I'm just not seeing why we use that reference for this project.
So I would say that the other, the other applications that I referenced also did not look at Eames and Woburn Street. It's the same study area for all of these projects.
That's correct, but they didn't have a bridge at that point. That's my point.
But the bridge was included in those, in those traffic studies.
That's all I have for...
Joe, I'd just like to comment that section 18 of the Woburn zoning ordinance requires a meeting with the traffic engineer prior to beginning his traffic study to determine what scope of review the city engineer, who's responsible for traffic in the city, is going to require. So Scott met with him, just like any other engineer, and he lays out the scope, and wants you to review this intersection, this intersection, that intersection, that's how we get to the traffic study. So what you say may very well be accurate, but, you know, we're not the ones that determine the scope of the traffic study.
I understand, and I'm just clarifying that, I want to make sure that I have my facts correct. And where you get your direction from, whether accurate or inaccurate? I want the associate to give you guys the direction to follow. That's all I have for traffic. Do you have a question for drainage, sir?
Okay, thanks.
On the outfall for the drainage of this project, is there any concern about the wetland area on the south of Merrimack Street? I mention this because it was a project a few years back that the outfall dumped into that area, and was confirmed that the, not the spillway, but the culvert was in good working order. Shortly thereafter, the project was completed, and everything was done correctly, it was a lot of flooding for a good period of time. And I want to make sure that the conversations being held by the department heads and yourselves have evaluated it.
Yes, I can confirm, we have evaluated it, and we're actually, to give you a better description of the stormwater management system, we're creating over an acre of green space on the property. The existing site's almost entirely impervious, and some of the BMPs that we're including as part of the design are designed to reduce the peak rates and the volume of runoff leaving the site. So what I can say for sure is that we're not making anything worse further downstream.
Do you know how far downstream you've evaluated in your, I understand, the direct runoff into the system? But do you think that at an immediate level or further down? I understand, you've got to get direction again from the city. There's a lot of proposals that we see now are being affected from developments prior, and it affects everyone downstream, obviously, to alleviate the problem. But it's better to resolve it before the development gets gone. That's the reasoning for these type questions I have.
No, no, I appreciate the questions. We established the study point basically at the corner of New Boston Street and Merrimack. That's where all the water joins and goes into the closed drainage system that leaves away from the site. So that was our study point, and we've found that we're reducing the peak rates and volumes at that location.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other board member that has any questions for the petitioner? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, either in favor or against the project? Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please. All right, I do not see anybody in the audience that is poised to speak, so at this point, I would ask the Planning Board Director for a recommendation.
I would recommend that the board consider granting the request for continuance of the hearing, and continue the public hearing to 7:00 PM on Tuesday, October 11th.
So moved.
All right, there's a motion by Dave. Is there a second? Second by Jim. Any further discussion? I'd ask for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five in favor, and then Bob is abstaining, correct? All right.
Excuse me, along with that, I'm sorry, I should have brought up that the venue for the October 11th meeting has yet to be determined. It may be an in-person here at the City Council chambers, it may be in some other office in City Hall, or it may be held virtually. The board will have that discussion later tonight, later on in the meeting, and will make the decision at that point.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda, under public hearings, I will call proposed zoning amendment to, A, amend the City of Woburn zoning ordinance by adding a new Section 32 entitled Life Sciences and Business Mixed-Use Overlay District, LBOD, and B, amend the Woburn zoning map to overlay the new LBOD district onto the parcels shown on Woburn assessor's maps as Map 29 Block 1 Lot 1, Map 29 Block 1 Lot 2, Map 29 Block 1 Lot 3, and Map 29 Block 1 Lot 4. Oh, and one more, Map 29 Block 1 Lot 5. Attorney Tarby, again, welcome.
Thank you. For the record, Joseph Tabby, Ruben Redman, 500 Unicorn Park Drive in Woburn, on behalf of the applicant, TDC Development Group, LLC. Before we get started tonight, and to Tina through the chair, did you provide copies of the emails from Daniel Farullo, Peter Lennon, and James Mohn? If not, have made copies.
For the record, I provided a copy of an email from Marie Lean and an attachment that she referenced, an email from Joe Flaherty, came in later this afternoon, Peter Lennon, Daniel Farullo, and Laura Felice.
Did you have the one from James Mohn?
I do not have that.
Okay, I'll submit for the record 10 copies, since you have the others.
Certainly. Motion to accept in the public record.
So moved.
Motion by Dave, second by Carolyn, all in favor, six in favor, none opposed. That matter is accepted.
You want to take these two at the same time?
I'm sorry?
I just want the record to be correct.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so our presentation this evening will consist of a brief update from me, and then Scott Thornton will follow to respond to traffic questions that came up at the last Planning Board meeting. He'll then be followed by Nick Delacava of Allen &amp; Major, and then Joshua Philbrook of Ten's Facility will address some of the safety questions that came up. So in terms of permitting, where we are with the City Council is that the public hearing on September 20th was further continued to October 4th. We also had a meeting with the Ordinance Committee on August 30th. Planning Board public hearing, as you know, was continued to September 13th and continued to this evening. Just to refresh your memory, we filed, there are two petitions before the Planning Board. One, to amend the zoning ordinance by adding the new Section 32 entitled Life Sciences and Business Overlay District, known as the LBOD. And then we filed a second petition to amend the zoning map to include four parcels of land in the LBOD. I know from attending all these meetings, several members of the public have mentioned that seven lots were included in this petition, but there are only four lots. There's the Showcase Cinema Lot, where the cinema's located. There's the additional parking lot that the applicant has under agreement. The third lot really is Middlesex Canal Park Road, which is a separate registered land lot that's owned by National Amusements, and also the hotel property. So there's a total of 32.96 acres of land that are included. As I indicated at the prior hearings, if the zoning amendment is adopted, my client would plan to file a special permit petition with the City Council seeking approval primarily of advanced light manufacturing or life science uses. So at this time, I'm going to introduce Scott Thornton of Van Assen Associates, and as I said, he'll be followed by Nick Delacava of Allen &amp; Major, and then Joshua Philbrook. And then I would like to, before we get into questions, just respond to a couple of the emails that have been submitted to the Planning Board for clarification purposes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. For the record, Scott Thornton with Van Assen Associates, looking at traffic issues around the proposed changes. At the last meeting, there were three specific comments that came up related to traffic, that the traffic projection should include the existing hotel and cinema, because they would be generating traffic as well as the proposed project. And we've updated the slides that you've seen from last time to incorporate the existing traffic generation from the hotel and cinema. Those are the numbers in gray, or represented by the bars in gray on the chart. We've kept the proposed development in blue, and you can see there's the trip impact from each of the components shown, as well as the total trips represented by the boxed value at the top. And, again, these, these, this chart depicts the traffic generation for the permitted uses on-site. So office, shopping center, medical office, discount store, home improvement store, those are possible on-site with a special permit. All of these uses were sized at 200,000 square feet to be comparable to the proposal for the GMP facility. And the intent of this slide is to show the relative intensity of traffic generation, where the proposed use generates less traffic on a square footage basis than almost any of the other uses during this time period. The only exception is the shopping center, and the shopping center is generally not open during the morning time period. You can see in the next slide, which shows the evening peak hour, that it's even more the case, where the, you know, now you have a much larger impact of traffic generation from the existing hotel and the cinema, but you still have a relatively small component from the proposed GMP facility. And again, it's much lower than any of the, any of the other permitted uses, again, at that same 200,000 square foot size. So, and again, it's just the intent to show the relative intensity, how the site, the proposed GMP use, doesn't generate traffic anywhere near the levels of intensity as some of the other potential uses that could go on-site with a special permit. potential uses that could go on-site with a special permit. The next slide responds to the question about taking into account the additional lots within the LBOD district. And this project only assumes development of this one lot, and retention, assumes retention of the cinema and the hotel. So, there's no other development that's contemplated at this time, and to assume some other development level would be speculative. And that's pretty clear, and you can hear from Attorney Tarby as well on that. If it's up such point that those, the proposals move forward to develop those other buildings, then that would need to be accounted for in the development at that time. So, any traffic study or any other review would account for those parcels, those developments at that time. That's not what this parcel, what this proposed development is about. And then the last slide for traffic, there was a comment about the rotary being unsafe and how traffic is becoming worse in this area of Woburn. We anticipate, as part of the traffic study for this project, to review safety. We do a formal safety analysis as part of the, as part of the traffic study process, and we work with the city engineer, we work, we get data from the Woburn Police Department, as well as Mass DOT, who has jurisdiction over the rotary. And we fully expect to look at traffic trends and patterns, and how they've changed over the recent past, in order to project things out into future conditions, which is a standard requirement for the, for the traffic analysis. That's it for traffic. I'll turn it over to, I believe, Nick.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
To the chair?
Sure.
Just a correction, you used the term speculative. The Planning Board does forward thinking. Our responsibility is to the community to look at the bigger picture, the long-term picture. So, when you use the term speculative, that sounds like it's an uneducated emotional response to a situation without any real thinking that goes into it. And I need you to understand that this board, which I've been on for 18 years, does not do that. It thinks about the well-being of the people of this city only, period. It's not speculation, it's forward thinking, okay?
That's fine, and that was not the intent of the language, was not to imply that. It was just to imply that it's, or to state that there's nothing proposed at this time.
But you understand, our job is to look for the future.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Again, for the record, Nick Delacava, civil engineer with Allen &amp; Major Associates. The last meeting, there was one specific site, civil concern, that was brought up, and that was how will groundwater be impacted during construction? At this time, the actual impact is unknown, because there really hasn't been a formal design done at this time, but a full geotechnical evaluation will be prepared prior to design and construction, and will be included in future submissions to the city. Water table impacts will be mitigated during construction. So, once those geotechnical evaluations are performed, and we have a better idea of what we're working with, we will design around it and mitigate as necessary. Thank you. I'll hand it over to Josh to discuss the safety controls.
Good evening. Joshua Philbrook with Dens Facility Services for the record. So, we've, past few meetings, we've discussed what's going to happen with the air that's exhausted out of this facility. So, just want to reemphasize that in this facility, we will have redundant air systems, both makeup air as well as exhaust. Any lab exhaust will be odorless and colorless, and anything that is, you know, the design will meet all the air emissions requirements as regulated by the Massachusetts Environmental, or the DEP, as well as the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. So, that, just want to make sure that everyone understands that this will, you know, any lab exhaust will be colorless, odorless, it's carbon neutral, so it's not going to be a smoke stack of sorts. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right.
To the chair?
Sure.
Odorless, colorless, and of course, not harmful.
Correct. I mean, it would be, you know, based on whatever is being exhausted, would meet the requirements as established by the EPA and the DEP.
But it's important you tell this community, just because you can't see it or smell it doesn't mean there's not something there. So, we want to be sure there's nothing there.
Absolutely.
I live on the other side of the highway. These folks live next to the place you're talking about. We need to be sure.
Absolutely. So, it would be designed so that it, you know, no harm, you know, impact for the community.
For sure.
Absolutely. I mean, in terms of design, absolutely.
In terms of design, okay. All right. Because I'm just thinking of the people that live 50 yards away.
Absolutely. You know, it's, like any, you know, factory, you know, around, I mean, I can't speak to, you know, the specifics, but in this case, you know, I can guarantee you that the design will meet all safety parameters as required.
Okay.
Good. All right. All right. Joe, is that, is that your contemplated presentation for today, or are there more presenters?
No, I just wanted to comment on two of the emails that were submitted, just for purposes of clarification and making sure you have accurate information. There was a email communication from Marie Lean dated September 23rd that included a copy of an article from, I think it was Boston, Boston.com, or Boston Globe, in which the email emphasis was on, quote, "Amid safety concern over such a facility near residents." Apples and oranges, clear, clear example. This facility was being located on the opposite side of a potty wall in a condominium, not in a separate building a half a mile away, or 300 feet away, or two miles away. It was on the other side of a potty wall. So, I want to make sure that you are aware of that when you read this communication. Also, there was a statement indicating that we've increased the number of lots to five, as I indicated, it's always been four since we've filed the revision. There was also a email from Laura Felici dated September 26th with a number of comments indicating that the TD Development Group mentioned they'll only use 15% high-hazard use, but clearly it's 10% for H2, H3 uses. It's never been, never been at 15, 15%. And talks about this having to be captured and zoning laws. It's in the proposed zoning amendment that we've submitted. And then talked about the zoning change being for the tenant and not the land. This is a zoning amendment that would include the four parcels of land that I outlined at the beginning of my presentation. And then there was talk about a decrease in the setback from residential areas for high-hazard use from 1,500 to 250. Well, under the overlay, there is no setback, but I understand the 1,500-foot comparison. We're proposed at 250 feet, and we've, I think, produced evidence that shows it can be done safely. It's been done safely all over the Commonwealth, all regulated by Border Health Regulations, IBC. There was also a comment that says that life sciences and biomed is a fairly new industry that's highly unregulated by the federal government. Well, that's not accurate either. Dr. Felici has shown numerous times through this process how highly regulated these facilities are at the federal, state, and local level. And then, there's a couple other comments. There were comments about other cities with fewer or no regulations, just demonstrates how new this is. Well, again, that's not accurate. We were asked to investigate if similar communities had a high-hazard provision in its zoning bylaw. We could not find a single one that did that. And that doesn't mean that, it's because this is a new, a new business. Will the infrastructure be in place to deal with increased chemicals in the water? Well, we addressed this, and we talked about the affluence, and as Tim Williams indicated at the last meeting, we have to comply with the MWI regulations before anything gets discharged into the system. And then, just two more. Well, we have to address the infrastructure in place to enforce regulations imposed on the land. But it's not for the applicant to address, it's up to the city to enforce these regulations. So, that's, those are my only comments to that email.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before I open it up to the public, are there board members? Jim?
Traffic engineer, please.
No, Chris Clark, let me slide over here.
Bring up a PowerPoint presentation, if you would, for the evaluation between the proposed development and the byright. Thank you. So, right now, you're, that's 277 trips, and that is, that development that's out there right now for parcel 1 of three developments, because the fourth is a driveway. What is the equation of square footage between that lot and the two adjacent lots, being the cinemas and the hotel?
Yeah, so the hotel, so the way the trips get generated is slightly different, depending on the use. So, the cinema is based on the 14 screens, and the hotel is based on, I think it's 199 rooms? It's 199 rooms.
I guess, let me clarify my question. So, the hotel and the, if the hotel and the cinemas were to go away, they're bare lots, which we're only, we're not even looking at your development, this is only for zoning here tonight. If that square footage was there, and they had the similar configuration that you folks are using, two stories with the stacks above that reach your limits and all that, right? That can find you to certain distances for setbacks. How much square foot of development would you have total, and how many trips would be generated? What I'm trying to show here is the total trip generation for the rezoning of that whole area versus what is there now with the cinemas and the hotel for the residents. I think you, right now, you're at 277 for one lot. If that's one-third of the total square foot of development, easy enough, it's going to be somewhere around eight and a quarter a day, right, for the whole area. What's there now? You have, you're 277, you have the cinemas, and you have the hotel. What's that equal to? I'd rather take the answer from the traffic engineer. Thank you.
It's called me, but you've got to keep in mind, too, that we're talking about the four lots. One of the lots is Middlesex Canal Park Road.
Joe, I understand, we're talking about a rezoning for an overlay district. We're not talking about what, anything else is going on here, just the rezoning of it. So, I'm trying to evaluate it for the people that are in the audience that have concerns about traffic. So, if you were to tear down all the buildings there, start fresh, your square footage of development could be X. Is it three times your number there, or is it four times? My guess is it's somewhere in that range, right, that you're going to be in the 800, 900 trips per day. What is currently being used by the cinemas and the hotel, right, plus your 277, does that exceed it? That's my question.
Well, let me just, let me just give you this information, because you really have to take this into consideration. The hotel property, seven and a half acres. The site that we're proposing to develop is 13.49 acres, and the showcase property is 10.88. Okay, so it's not as easy as saying, you know, three times 277. You also have to engineer the site. If you look at the hotel site, that runs right along the Abajoona River. I'm not sure what, well, the canal, Middlesex Canal, excuse me. I'm not sure what impact that will have on any development on that site. So, it's not, I'm not going to let Scott answer this, but from a development planning point of view, you have to take all those into consideration. So, it's not, not an easy answer, we could just say, oh, 277 times three.
Agreed. I'm trying to get a range of where we're at, so that folks in the audience that have these concerns can evaluate what your trip generation is. Because right now, your proposal is a better scenario than what's allowed by rights. And that's what you're trying to sell here, all right? And that's what you have to convince the board members here. Is this development less of an impact for the neighbors and the community versus a car dealership, a big box store, or anything like that? And what you have up there right now shows that per one lot, all right? Now, if the other two lots don't get developed, you have to keep that in there as a constant, and your total trips coming out of Middlesex Canal driveway, right? And that's what I want the folks in the city to understand. Currently, you have X that are guaranteed, but if the other two were to go away, it's conceivable, say, with your setbacks and all that, you're going to have X amount of square footage total to develop, and that's...
Right. So, I would echo what Joe said, that we haven't done that analysis. We haven't, you know, if it's, and if it's, if it's 13 acres versus 17 acres, I would say, you know, it's, it's probably not triple or not quadruple. It's probably, you know, maybe a little more than double. But again, it's not double the 277. That's, that assumes that the hotel and the cinema stay there. You know, if it's, if it's double the 185, it's in there. But again, we haven't, we haven't done that analysis. So, and it may not even, it may not even be double. I mean, that's, that's kind of the issue with, you know, just kind of doing this on the fly. I understand what you're asking for. And then the other thing is that the, you know, if you, if you look at what else could be developed on those, the cinema and the hotel parcels, you know, it could be, you know, maybe it's double, maybe it's a 400,000-square-foot office development, maybe it's a 400,000-square-foot medical office development, which, which is clearly much higher than what the proposed use would be.
And that's what I'm trying to flesh out through you, being the professional, throwing the stats up there, that the city residents have to understand, okay, that if we go in with the medical office building, you're getting 700-plus.
Right.
Right? If you're going in with the LBOD development, it's going to be somewhere in the range of two to three times that number. Is that, we'll just go twice as much, for argument's sake, all right? But then, people in the town can evaluate what the trip generation are on their own. Those are facts that match up apples to apples. Right now, it doesn't. And if nothing goes in on the adjoining lots, you have X amount of trips currently going in and out of it. And, but with that, knowing the cinemas, right, and living nearby and growing up in that area, your trip generation at night are the majority of them.
Right.
Versus, you know, totally off-peak than what you do for your standard commercial development, usually, you know, eight to five.
Right.
So, they don't fit the norm, but...
Yeah, I mean, this...
They also go against what the public wants, too. They don't want the, all the traffic at night when they're home with their family.
Right. Whereas with the cinema and the hotel, that's when all this traffic would come in, Friday nights, Saturday, Saturday nights, Sunday. So, that's when, that's when the existing uses generate their peak level of traffic. And you, and you made the point, excuse me, for the evening time period, the hotel and the cinema generate a higher level of traffic in the evening.
That's what I'm challenging, to get that information presented to the city, if you could. if you could.
So we have this, we have the slide that shows the estimates of the traffic for the, for the existing hotel and the cinema during the evening time period.
Yeah, what is that?
So, so the 314 represents the evening peak hour trips for the existing hotel and the cinema.
I'm sorry, I missed, I missed that.
And then this is just the same format. So, so the 179 represents the traffic generated by the GMP, which is actually less than what the existing hotel and cinema would generate.
Thank you.
Sure.
I missed that slide.
Okay, you're good. Okay. Are there other questions for the applicant before I open it up to the public? All right. This is a public hearing. If there is anyone in the audience that wishes to speak either for or against this project, please come up and state your name and address for the record, please. Hello and welcome.
Hello, thank you. My name is Carol Nagel. I live at 723 Main Street in Woburn. And I'd like to ask this board a question. Is this the first overlay district of its kind in the city? Would it be the first?
Well, it depends on how you define kind. There's probably seven or eight different overlay districts.
Nope. I'm talking life science. I'm talking this exact overlay district. Is there any other ones in the city?
What do you mean by exact? Exact same uses, exact same dimensional requirements?
Nope.
Exact same provisions?
This overlay district, this zoning change, this overlay district. Are there any other ones in the whole city?
T-Bod, Technology and Business Overlay District over the Craft Site.
And it's life science?
It allows some life science uses.
So we, we currently have other businesses in the city that are biotech, biomedical science by right in industrial and commercial areas, not jammed in the middle of a residential zone. So I don't quite understand why we would even consider this with a petitioner who really has not held up their end of the bargain. 25 years ago, they came before Planning Board, City Council, changed their plans, made everybody happy, and then never stuck to what they said they were going to do. So now we're going through it again 25 years later, when they weren't supposed to subdivide the lot, now we've subdivided the lot. And they're telling us that they're not going to do anything except what you see, but we know that's not going to happen. We know that after probably a year, the cinemas will be gone, the hotel will be gone, there'll be ginormous buildings there eating up the neighborhood. And my question is, if we put this overlay district in, up till now, the city has had a say in what goes in as far as use is. If the overlay district goes in, will the city then have no say? And we won't even know what is in these buildings and what is being done right down the street. I mean, I just picture the fact that we put a district in like this and the next thing you know, everything's going in there by right and we don't even know what's going into our wastewater, what's going into our ear. Traffic study would be the least of our problems because they're going to probably change the whole system and the traffic's going to be a nightmare anyway. And that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello and welcome.
Hi. Cynthia Tachi, 16 Lowell Street. I follow the news. I know that the cinema is winning the right to subdivide the property. The town has fought it for a long time and since it's apparent they're going to lose, they're giving in gracefully and trying to get some way that they can have some control over this property as to what happens there. My experience with people I know from, you know, these kind of tech companies, they have a lot of square footage per person that works there, based on it. They're not, we're not going to see people in cubicles and 10,000 people smushed in there because it's a call center or something like that. Something's going to happen there. And I think this is probably one of the lowest impacts and the best dollar value for the city for tax reasons. I know I've spoken to people who work over in Lincoln Labs and in the 21st century, the technology and the safeguards in place are such that, you know, yes, in the 50s and 60s, they were dumping stuff in the water in Woburn. It's not, I don't, I cannot conceive of anything like that happening again, especially where we are so vigilant about it. Something is going to happen there. We, and I've, you know, talked to people on the council and other people, and they've told me that square foot by square footage, this is going to have the least impact on traffic because of the basic nature of the business. So that is why I'm sharing with you that I am not opposed to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? And we encourage participation. Come on down. Hello and welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jessica Whitten and I live in Lake Avenue. I'm a Woburn resident for the last 20 years. And I'm really concerned about this new construction that you guys are, that these persons are trying to do. I'm concerning about, sorry about my English. I try to do my best. But we have already water problems on the city and I think we don't need one more. And like everybody else is saying, the traffic is so bad, so far in the city. And I'm really afraid, petrifies me just to think in the future, if something can happen in this lab place, it's going to be a big risk for the whole citizens. And I'm thinking about my kids. That's my big concern. And I can say I oppose to this as a citizen, as a resident in this community. That's my big comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello and welcome.
Hi. My name is Anastasia Blyonska. I live at 56 Beach Street in Woburn. I'm a biomedical engineer by training, bachelor's and a master's degree in biomedical engineering. I've worked in life sciences for most of my career so far. So I understand kind of the risks that go into GMP facilities and both various types of life sciences facilities. So I'm not opposed to life sciences as a whole. I think that the petitioner needs to do a better job of addressing the public's concerns about both the traffic patterns going into the development area as well as the traffic patterns that will have, that will happen in the general central square area, because people do cut through the central square area to get to the other side of Woburn. That does happen. I do also believe that the petitioner needs to do a better job of explaining the types of waste, both water and vapor waste that might come out of, of the facility, simply for the public's benefit. The first petition, I think, did happen last year, so there was ample time, it seems like, to do something like that. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Dr. Antonia Poliesi and I live at 6 True Place in Woburn. So I'm actually at one of the very nearby residences to this area. And you may well recognize me because I have been working with the Davis Company. But since I am also a resident, I hope you don't mind me taking a moment to talk a little from that perspective. As I'm sure you can guess or have already figured out, I do have a lot of professional experience in this area, advising on the safety of laboratories and GMP facilities as well. And so my, my personal story on this is actually that I, I'm not very good at paying attention to what's going on in my town yet. My husband came to me and he said, oh, they're going to put in lots of shopping, like a shopping mall at this area. I think he was confused. And I said, oh, no, the traffic's going to be terrible. And then he came back to me later and he said, oh, no, I found out actually they're going to put in labs. And I said, oh, that's kind of interesting. It'll be interesting to see what labs turn up there. And then he came back to me and he said, actually, they're putting in like lab manufacturing? And I said, wow, GMP, like manufacturing is the most tightly regulated and self-regulated of lab projects. I actually feel really good about that. So I got, I got kind of excited about this and that's why I was very interested in working with the Davis Company when this came in the direction of my company, Safety Partners. I also thought I would mention that I think there's a lot of safety built into the regulations that has to be followed. But also, I've really noticed with these companies, there's so much internal motivation. I mean, they hire really smart people who don't want them to be doing bad, dangerous things. So there's a lot of eyes on the safety program internally. Usually, people are very motivated by that. And also, you know, companies want to make money. They want to not ruin their relationship with the local area. And they want to not ruin their relationships with potential collaborators. Usually, when they're going after funding sources, there's also a lot of eyes on their safety program. So those are just some things that I've noticed personally that made me kind of excited about the prospect of this project and hopefully that the traffic would be a lot less bad than some of the other uses that could potentially end up there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This continues to be a public hearing. We are here for your comments. And so if there's anybody in the audience that hasn't yet gotten a chance to talk and would like to, we invite you to come up now. Hello and welcome.
Hello. Joe Flaherty, 17 Boyd Road. I've attended the majority of the public meetings on this development and I've seen that this proposal has come a long way since inception. Davis has done a tremendous job at soliciting feedback from the community and making changes to incorporate a lot of that feedback. Davis has done a great job of bringing in industry professionals to answer any questions and also to educate on the safeguards that will be put in place of a future build. Back in January, I attended the Meet Your Local Government Day hosted by the Woburn Chamber of Commerce across the street at the library. And some of the city council members were there along with Mayor Galvin, Council President Concanon, and Building Commissioner Tom Quinn, and all of whom spoke about their vision for the city. When the floor was opened up for questions, I asked what kind of businesses they wanted to attract and what type of developments they want to see in Woburn. The mayor and the commissioner both echoed that they wanted to see more life science as well as clean, high-tech manufacturing, research and development. Commissioner Quinn went into even more detail outlining that he wanted to see biosafety level one and two labs, exactly what Davis is proposing here. The proposed development is in alignment with the vision outlined by some of the highest ranking officials in the city and is a great use of a historically underutilized property. That would be, that would bring tremendous value and opportunity to the city. A new development like this would bring good-paying jobs, not only during the build, but also while operating the building for years to come. I support this proposal and what it means for the future of Woburn. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else for tonight that would like to speak? All right. I don't see anybody popping up. So at this point, this is a continued public hearing. This has been before us for a number of meetings. I would be interested if there are board members who have other information that they want. But we've been provided with so much information at this point, I would think it's probably come to the point of the board making a decision and moving this matter to the city council, who is the ultimate deciding authority. So with that, if there is any more information that you would like, I'd certainly, you know, let's talk about it. Otherwise, it might be an idea to close the public hearing and move the matter. But I'm certainly open to hearing the board. Jim?
I'd like to hear what the applicant's relationship and responsibility is for the taking over the existing conditions of National Amusements drainage issues that are not up to snuff. They have been referenced in this proposal. How that's going to be rectified prior to construction and development if it gets the green light.
Madam Chair, I can answer that.
Okay. Attorney Tarby, please do.
Bear with me for one second here. There was a recent settlement between the city council and National Amusements. City Solicitor representing city council and Michael Conley of Murtha-Kline are representing National Amusements. As part of that settlement, I'm just trying to find, there was a executed agreement on July 22 of this year that was entered into between National Amusements and the city of Woburn. And prior to this agreement being entered into, the city engineer was requested to provide to the city solicitor what needed to be done to address drainage on the Showcase Cinema Lot. So I'm not going to go through, obviously, and, and read the whole agreement. But there was, there was an exhibit attached to the agreement that sets forth scope of drainage repairs for the property. And one of them had a 24-inch pipe connecting detention pond one to two, 36-inch pipe connecting, connecting pond two to three, and so on. Outlet pipes being closed, cleared of overgrowth, all catch basins being cleaned and retrofitted with vented hood to prevent downstream travel of grease and oil. The piping network inspected with CCTV and heavy cleaning provided as necessary. Hydraulic controls to each of the detention ponds should be inspected, repaired, or replaced as necessary. And the responsibility for that work will be on the developer of the, you know, so-called parking lot, lot. So this is a public document. It is on file with the city clerk's office.
So national development, National Amusement is deferring all their responsibilities that have been agreed to through the agreement between the city themselves to... have been agreed to through the agreement between the city themselves to the proposed applicant if this development gets approved?
No, I'm just gonna read, I'm gonna read from the agreement. "In connection with any sale or permitted development of parcel 12. And AI will contractually ensure that the developer of parcel 12 is responsible for the payment and performance of any drainage work relating to the drainage system servicing parcel 12." There's other language in there addressing, they're not gonna go out and spend millions and millions of dollars right now without having any development approved on the site. So the idea is the developer of parcel 12 will be responsible for the payment and performance of the drainage work that's outlined in the agreement.
And Joe, just to be clear, is parcel 12 the part of the parcel we are talking about here?
Correct.
Okay.
So the issue that at hand, being from the neighborhood, was that the drainage was never completed through this development with National Amusements.
I'm sorry?
The drainage was never thoroughly completed. And right now, what you're saying to me, if I understood you correctly, only one-third of that property, whatever, they're only doing this, the parking lot, the latest development, is only gonna be the area they do the corrections on behalf of National Amusement. And whatever was there for the original building and the drainage that was, you know, not up to snuff and completed is not being addressed.
Well, as part of this agreement, National Amusements will arrange for the payment and performance of drainage work relating to the drainage system servicing parcel 11. Okay, but they won't be responsible to do such unless and until parcel 12 has been sold and permitted for development and only one such development is actually underway. So as part of, let's just play pretend for a second. The L-Bot gets approved, Davis comes in, applies for a special permit. During that special permit process, there'll be a number of conditions to address the drainage on the entire site and how that's gonna get done.
Okay, so clarify, correct me if I'm wrong in stating this. Parcel 11, National Amusements has money and they're gonna do the corrective work. Parcel 12 would be for the developer, if this gets approved, he would take care of all the drainage responsibilities coming from that lot based upon approval. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I will tell you now that if I was to, if this is to get approved prior to any development, all drainage would be corrected from the National Amusements prior to any buckets going on the ground on that lot to rectify the 25-year-old problem.
That would...
That would definitely be a concern, a number one for concerns coming from myself if this is to get approved. I just, if there's reservation with that, you may want to defer to your client.
So Jim, this settlement agreement after at least a year of negotiation was entered into the court as a decision, part of the settlement of the appeal of the special permit by National Amusements a few years ago. So this is, this is a court, this is part of a court decision.
Correct. It doesn't tell you when it has to be done either.
I'm sorry?
It doesn't tell you when it has to be completed, though, does it, in that document?
It does. It doesn't exist, there's a whole exhibit to the agreement that talks about Exhibit A, drainage system work. It has to be completed.
When does it have to be completed by?
Completed...
When does the work have to be completed by?
You know, I'm guessing, you know, that would be part of the discussion with the city council during the special permit process. You know, I'm guessing that most likely would have to be done prior to occupancy.
I'm gonna say it should be done prior to construction and ground.
Yeah, well...
Only because it's 25 years old and we finally come to an agreement, the settlement, that other than your client bringing it up here and living in the area my entire life, I wasn't aware of that. I'm glad that it's being resolved, but we can't let bad habits go unsanctioned, you know? So it's in their best interest to get it resolved, you know, National Amusements. They want to broker a deal and take it in, they want the other part of the drainage done. The city and the residents do also, as does this board, I'm sure. So there's nothing but time on their hands to get moving. Hopefully, I see it, but that's all after the question on the drainage. Thank you.
Okay. Joe, I have just a follow-on question. It strikes me from the way that you've explained the agreement that nothing is happening until the property is subdivided and the developer gets approval to build. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, the property's already subdivided, A and I plan approved back in, I think, 2016. So the site just sits there. Okay, there was no activity on it. Once there's a project for lot 12, that drainage work and any other drainage work that has to be done on the entire site will be addressed pursuant to this agreement.
Okay, so my understanding is correct that the way that the parties settled it was to settle it pending development, essentially? That National Amusements doesn't have to fix the drainage on its site unless and until they find a developer for lot 12? And then everybody does their mitigation all at once?
Yeah, that summarizes it pretty good.
Okay, that's useful. Thank you, Joe.
Okay.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions? No, I haven't closed the public hearing yet, but ma'am, if I could just ask you to hold off. So at this point, I'm looking for direction from the board as to whether they feel that they have had sufficient time to process the massive amount of information that we've been given, whether they've had sufficient information to reach a position on the applicant's application, so to speak, and whether they're in a position to ask for the public hearing to be closed, to ask for a recommendation from the planning board director and to move this matter. So that's the question I pose for you all. Jim?
I put a request in to have a, either a meeting with the planning board and the city solicitor or some written direction on how to handle the resolve between the parties or the development side and the city and how the timetable is gonna work out. Because right now, that being thrown out there at this point, I'm not in a position where I feel comfortable voting. I don't have enough information, I feel. For most of the other issues, I do. This one here, I would have hoped there was a whole lot more clarity mainly on the city side to consider.
So just to make sure I understand, is this having to do with the drainage with the agreement for judgment that Joe was referring to as to when everybody is supposed to do what?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. Well, I mean, I, it strikes me from the judgment, and I have no reason to doubt what Joe has summarized, that that is a done and dusted matter, that for what, for, you know, the city solicitor representing the city entered into a binding court order that essentially let National Amusements not do anything until a developer was found for their other parcel. So to me, then, there's sort of two choices. Either a developer is found for the other parcel and the parties get underway and they get to, you know, this agreement sounds very comprehensive. They go through the process of getting this done or they look for another developer. Or if there's never a developer, I don't know what the agreement says if there's never a developer found. But I mean, that seems to me kind of cut and dried at this point. Like, that's not something that can be changed.
I agree with that. There's not so much a change, but I'm looking to lock in a timetable because we have a current property owner that had an agreement with the city that reneged on it. All right, National Amusement. So 25 years later, we didn't get the work done and now we're gonna enter another agreement on their behalf so this developer can pay for the cost of all the drainage work for National Amusements. He's not only paying for lot 12, he's paying for lot 11 also. That's what this is all about, all right? So when is it actually gonna be done? When is the city gonna be whole from the original National Amusement development back 25 years ago?
Okay.
That's what I'm looking to achieve on behalf of the residents.
All right, so let me just make sure I understand. The piece of information that you are missing in order to formulate your position on this matter is from our city solicitor, an explanation of the agreement that was entered into and made a court order last year as to what the party's relative obligations are under this agreement and what the timetables are. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have, Bob?
Yeah, I am in the camp of moving it. I think I've got as much information as my brain will handle. I truly, you know, I have no problem with an L-Bot. Based on everything that's happening in the world today, we could use a couple of them probably because if we could get that type of business to Woburn, that would be great. I know that out of everything that's going in, traffic-wise, this will be the best. Traffic is gonna increase, traffic is gonna get worse, no matter what goes in there. And this is probably the least invasive of it. Drainage-wise, I'm not really that worried about it because it seems to me that 99.9% of the places, things that we vote for that have drainage situations with it get solved. And in a lot of cases, they're better than they were before the development or something else went in there. What I have a real hard time with is that I'm hearing for weeks, months, regulated regulations, it'll be safe, no, that won't happen, no, we'll watch it. And that makes me very nervous. And it makes me nervous because if it was gonna be 250 feet away from my house, I would not want it. If I had young kids in the neighborhood, I mean, I don't know enough about it to say it's completely safe. And where it's located, you know, if this was on the far end of Commerce Way and we were voting an L-Bot out there, it's like, go for it. It would take hours before it ever would get to me. But in this case, it's 250 feet away from neighbor, I mean, I drove over there the other day and I drove down to the end of the parking lot. There's a fence and then on the other side of the fence, well, there's a driveway, there's the fence, on the other side of the fence, just all houses. And this is gonna be 250 feet away from the houses, the neighborhoods. And so from my standpoint, I cannot vote for this just for that reason alone. And again, maybe I'm naive to think that something could happen or that this is somewhat dangerous. But if I am, I am. And I am ready to move forward with it tonight, one way or another, whichever way the board goes. I also know that we are the recommending body and that the city council will pretty much do whatever they want. So, to be honest, I'm ready to move.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other members who would like to weigh in? All right, the public hearing is still open and I don't want to cut off anybody that has something to say. So if there is anyone out there for a last call before we consider closing it, feel free to come up and state your name and address for the record. Welcome again.
Carol Nagel, again, 723 Main Street. I find it interesting that the city entered into an agreement and what they got out of it was the drainage, the catch basins, the water control, the water retention. When that was in their original special permit 25 years ago, they haven't done it the whole time yet, that's what the city got out of it. I just found that whole thing interesting. You know, I hope you all take a minute to think about the fact that it is close to all the neighbors and that there's so many other things that could go in down there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight? Welcome again.
Sorry about that. So we do have...
Would you mind stating your name and address again?
I apologize. My name is Anastasia Budianska. I live at 56 Beach Street in Woburn. So we do have a number of pharmaceutical companies in the Woburn area, both that would, all of which frankly have more hazardous materials that they work with than the low, low-level labs. So I would be frankly kind of sad to lose a space like that, but at the same time, it's like organics, for example, just radio pharmaceuticals. Radio pharmaceuticals are radioactive products and nobody really knows that, it seems like, in Woburn. And I can walk there from my house. There's also another leaf therapeutics that's right behind a bunch of houses in Cummings Park, for example. I understand that this facility would be significantly larger. I think perhaps if the issue of being really close to the Butters was addressed, maybe the board would vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we have a public hearing that's open. In order to move and in order to ask the planning board director's recommendation and in order to make a decision, we have to close the public hearing. If there is a wish to keep it open, well, I'm happy to hear that too, but what is the will of the board?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, there is a motion on the table from Bob. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Dave. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would call for a vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Jim, I didn't see you.
I'll reiterate my request for the city solicitor to weigh in. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, in favor, one, two, three, four, five, sorry, counting is bad today, and opposed. One opposed. So that public hearing is closed. Does the planning board director have a recommendation?
I do. So I have been generally supportive, even last year, of the notion of Life Science District. I know there are a lot of questions or a lot of concerns about this particular use, but I was favorable and remain favorable now. As someone mentioned, any new development is gonna bring traffic in. Those lots will be redeveloped at some point. I am heartened that this particular kind of use does tend to generate less traffic. And not only that, although there's traffic seven days a week, the traffic on the weekends from this kind of use is usually much lower than, say, a lot of the shopping centers or the home improvement stores that might otherwise go there. So I find that positive. I know it's very frustrating. I heard the comment earlier about they need to do a better job of traffic. There's certainly a lot of questions about traffic and a lot of details about how to deal with it. But the frustrating part is that they actually come later, after the rezoning, when they have the specifics of the project. That's when they get right down into the nitty-gritty and in the course of a special permit process before the city council and the planning board, which is a part of the review process as the L-Bot is written. There's a lot of questions that are asked of a lot of detail and only then do you get the real detailed information and the solution. So I understand the frustration early on, but recognize that later on, those answers do come. The fact that... The fact that this kind of a development or these kinds of businesses create jobs that have good wages is always important. We need jobs at all levels, obviously. But without disparaging the nature of the position, a cashier at, at a Home Depot is going to make less than someone that works at a position here. I think that's important, to bring those kinds of jobs to the community. Lastly, I guess, on the issue of permitting, there are no guarantees, but I've been heartened by a couple of things. They did a good job, I thought, explaining the multiple layers of permitting by different agencies, all looking at the same kind of information. And, you know, there are businesses, as someone mentioned earlier, there's multiple businesses of just this type across the city. And we're not hearing of issues, weekly, monthly, or perhaps even yearly, with problems related to, you know, unexpected releases of air or, you know, water pollution. So generally speaking, I'm in favor of the notion of creating an L-Bod in this area. But I do think that there's a lot or a number of things about the proposed text of the ordinance that should change to make it as good as it can be, at least in my opinion, for the city. Just to mention them, generally, the proposal is to add a number of new definitions to the zoning ordinance. And I really think that, I'm not certain, but I think that we have obviously a lot of existing definitions. And it may very well be that they could work within the existing definitions, which would mean we didn't have to create new ones and carve them out specifically for just these four parcels in the city. So I do think the text needs work in that arena. There is a multiple provisions that would allow the city council to waive or vary some of the dimensional requirements of the proposed district. And I would recommend, among other things, that the board recommend in turn to the council that those provisions be stricken. I think there've been representations made about maximum building heights and minimum setbacks that I would not like to see undone and changed or varied by six votes on a city council at some point in the future. So to give some certainty to someone looking at an ordinance or thinking about buying a house, how close could this come? It would be great if the ordinance said, no closer than two-fifty, and there was no opportunity to change that, except by hardship, which is very unlikely to be, to be proven down the road. The solicitor and I and the building inspector also went through the draft ordinance and found a number of things, in many cases, I'll call them housekeeping. Make sure that the list of other sections of the ordinance that apply to the L-Bod are in fact cited and specifically stated so that it's clear down the road that, for instance, although there may be a separate parking requirement for a particular use in the L-Bod, all the other parking things of like minimum parking space size and aisle widths and other kinds of design standards, those should continue to apply even if the calculation of parking requirements might be different. So that's an example of a number of things that, working through the ordinance, I've recommended and provided to the board a copy of what I think, in my opinion, you would want to recommend to the council, regardless of whether you vote and suggest they approve it or whether you suggest they not adopt it. I think we should send along these proposed amendments for them to consider. It's kind of what you did last time. The vote that time ended up being a no. But in addition to the no, you sent some very specific suggestions about text amendments. And I would recommend you do that here. I think that's it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. That being said, is there any further discussion or I would entertain a motion?
May I ask Tina a question?
Absolutely. Discussion is always encouraged.
So the only thing I, I'm not quite sure with what you told us is, were you telling us you thought we, you recommended or you don't recommend?
I did. I recommend the idea of adopting the L-Bod on this project.
With all those text changes?
That's correct.
Okay, I just, you know, I got kind of lost in the explanation there.
Sorry.
And all the text changes, I'm sorry, are in Attachment A, is that right?
Yes. Provided you this evening. It's really a combined document at this point. I had created or had suggestions, all of which I had shared with both the building inspector and frankly with the petitioner in advance so they were aware of it. I've also incorporated, to the best that I can, some comments that came in this afternoon from the city solicitor. She reviewed the L-Bod at the request of the city council, and she issued a several-page memo this afternoon. So I reviewed that. And I think I've done, I don't know if it's perfect, but I've done a reasonably excellent job in incorporating them into that exhibit as well.
All right. We appreciate reasonable excellence. Did that answer your question, Dave?
It most certainly did.
All right.
It didn't change my mind, but it...
Well, and I would be very interested in a motion, either from you or anyone else. Bob?
Figure out what I want to say. I would make a motion to... Not an easy motion here. A motion to... I don't want to, I don't want it.
So you would be...
Against, I am...
So you would be sending a unfavorable recommendation?
Unfavorable recommendation on setting up an L-Bod.
All right.
But if the council saw fit to do so, that they take the recommendations on, on the draft of Exhibit A into consideration when setting it up.
All right. A motion has been made by Bob. Is there a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
A second by Dave. Is there any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, I would ask...
Just a question?
Oh, certainly. Go right ahead.
When we vote, we're voting not.
Correct. The motion is for an unfavorable recommendation to the city council on the L-Bod, but if the city council chooses to entertain the L-Bod, that they take heed of Exhibit A suggestions by the planning board director as well as the city solicitor. So that is the motion that you're voting on. Is that, is that clear?
That's clear. It's just it's unusual. It's a little backwards to what we normally do.
Indeed.
But it makes sense now that the way you explained it.
All righty. So that being the case, I would ask for a vote. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five in favor. The chair is opposed. That motion carries. Good luck. Good luck with the council. All right. Next on the agenda is expiration of construction completion date, three Sherman Terrace. Attorney Salvati, welcome.
Good evening. Attorney Mark Salvati, fifty-seven Arlington Road in Woburn for the petitioner. We have Sherman first, is that what you...
Yeah, I called Sherman first, Mark.
So I did submit a revised timeline and a request to continue the, to extend the timeframe to finish the subdivision to the planning board director. A little further information has been obtained. So basically, there's been a couple of reasons for the delays, but the main one for both of these petitions is the inability to obtain granite curbing. So what I did was I supplied two timeframes. One is if we, if we could get it sooner. If we can't get it sooner, it's going to be March that we get it, and that would dictate, you know, the end game here. But based on, well, one thing, I represent both parties that are here, and Mr. Sheldier at Crossman actually has some granite curbing, enough for Mr. Shere to finish Sherman. So they've entered into an agreement, I believe it's finalized, wherein Mr. Shere is ordering and paying for a shipment to be placed for March that Mr. Sheldier will accept. Hopefully, we'll get an extension for Crossman. And that way, Sherman can get done this winter, prior to the winter. So that, if you were to vote, I would ask that you consider Schedule A in this particular instance, because I'm fairly confident that that's the route we're going to go. In that timeframe, I think I've addressed everything, including both pieces of property. There was a concern about putting the gas line up to both houses after the roadway is done. But that should not be a concern because it's coming off the other road and going to the rear of the two buildings. So I provided the timeframe. We're asking, we are asking for an extension here to, sorry, I have to take a look, June thirtieth of twenty-three, to finish everything. But that being said, the roadway would be done and coated hopefully before the snow flies. If it, if it is not done, I have assured on both of these that both roads are plowable, probably better than they were before, and the structures are below the binder coat. So there's no, there's no concern there for plowing. So with that, I'd be glad to take any questions on Sherman.
All right. Are there any questions for Attorney Salvati? Jim?
Questions from neighbors concerned about lack of activity out there, system basis. Seems like the same old story, just a different location.
Yeah, and I don't make any excuses other than the fact that he did have a couple of issues. One, with the foundation was put in the wrong place. We had to go back and get a variance from the Board of Appeals. It was five feet too close to the front lot line. We obtained that, and we were able to keep the foundation where it was. And the neighbor to the rear had done some excavating and taken down some trees and changed the grade, which caused Mr. Shere to have to build the retaining walls that are back there. He was going to have it all sloped down to the neighbor's property, but the neighbor is using a bit of the land, which we're going to continue to allow him to use, but it forced him to have to build these walls. And that's been an ongoing project. I think if you had been up there in the last three weeks, it's been a bustle of activity at this point. And I think he's taking the matter quite seriously and intends to frame the second house, you know, in, in October. So hopefully, he's rectifying those, those problems, and I can understand the neighbor's issues.
There's an issue with myself. June, June thirtieth is what you're asking for, is that correct?
Twenty-three, yeah.
That will be my final extension on this project.
Okay. That's understandable.
Jim, are you set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Are there other questions for Attorney Salvati? All right. Seeing no questions, I would ask the planning board director, do you have a recommendation? Tina?
I do. I'm disappointed in the length of time it's taken, and I do hope that the developer keeps his eyes on this prize and remains committed to finishing this project. But in light of the alternatives, I would recommend that the board, in fact, extend the completion date for the three Sherman Terrace subdivision to June thirty, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
All right. There is a motion by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I would ask for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Was that a in favor, Jim?
Yes, a lot of them.
Six in favor, none opposed. That motion is granted.
Thank you.
All right. Calling Crossman Road, expiration of construction completion date, review of bond amount. Ms. Attorney Salvati, welcome again.
Thank you. So I think, we'll take the second matter first. I think that the bond amount is probably not an issue. Is that correct, Tina? I think...
That's correct. Since Greg Rayon from the engineering department had expressed a concern the last time he did a review, but I sent him back out last week, and there's a significant amount of work that's been completed, such that he no longer has any concern regarding that.
And I'll give you a brief update. He has, so Mr. Sheldier bought, I think you recall, he was trying to buy the lots across the street. He has done so. An A and R has been recorded, so he can get building permits for those two lots. They weren't part of this subdivision approval, but I've added them into the timeframe because they are along that roadway, and they're actually on the side that gets the sidewalk. So I've added that timeframe in, obviously, because what they, these guys typically do is get the house framed before they put granite curbing in front of it, because it just gets ruined otherwise. So I've, I've provided that timeframe, and we're asking for, I think, November, in this instance, oh, sorry, October thirtieth of twenty-three, to, to finish everything. If you do go up there, it is in much better condition than, than that road was originally. I mean, it was very narrow. It's been widened significantly, and the same holds true for the ability to plow this winter. Should be no problem. And he's looking to extend to October thirtieth to, to get all the construction done. He actually has curbing on one side up to the second house that's constructed on the left. So he's, he's holding off on the curbing for the next house, and the, and he's holding off on the curbing on the right side and the sidewalk till he, till he frames those two. So the request is for October thirtieth of twenty-three.
All right. Are there any questions for Attorney Salvati? Carolyn?
I have a question for the director through the chair.
Sure.
Is it necessary that we have input from engineering before making a decision on the reasonableness?
No, in fact, well, you certainly are, obviously have the right. But I did speak verbally with Greg, and he felt it was, this particular date was reasonable, that he should be able to finish as long as Fred, and Fred typically does, he does not leave a job for months at a time. He plugs away at it and doesn't leave it. So I think we're all comfortable that, that that would be an adequate time for him to finish.
Thank you.
All right. And that is your recommendation?
It is. And I will add that unlike the earlier subdivision, this is one that's not causing complaints. So glad to be able to report that for a change.
That never happens to me.
Staff, staff, yeah. Everybody gets, even a blind squirrel finds a nut once in a while. So staff's supportive of an extension for the Crossman Road subdivision to October thirty, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Carolyn, second by Bob. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six in favor, none opposed. That motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Mark, can I ask you something?
Yeah.
Where are they moving the carnival to?
The Kiwanis? It's, it's this Saturday night. That's where I went. In the interim, I had to go to, so, yeah, we're having, it's, we're calling it Fall Fireworks Festival now. It's no longer Flag Day, but it's Library Park Saturday, this Saturday, three to, and the fireworks go off nice and early at seven-thirty.
I, I just wanted to give you a pitch.
Yeah, I was going to mention that because I did go to a meeting in, in between this one. So, yeah, if anybody can make it, it's, and my band is playing. So that's an, that's an extra draw.
See ya.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next, under subdivisions, Garish Drive, eighty-eight dash ninety-two Pearl Street, bond reduction and expiration of construction completion date.
Yes, members of the board, the completion date is actually, was set to expire three days from now. So this would have been on your agenda for your next meeting anyway. But I got a call from the developer last week asking me if the board and if the department could consider granting a bond reduction. I forwarded the request to engineering. They've reviewed the amount of the bond. They recommend in writing to us, which I provided you tonight, that the bond for this subdivision could be reduced to fifty-two-hundred dollars even. That will secure, that's enough funding to secure the installation of the light, which is the one remaining work task at this point. An as-built plan has been submitted, been reviewed, and there are a couple of changes. But Greg was confident that we not need to hold any money. The nature of the changes is such that the engineer would do them routinely. So staff is supportive of the notion of not only reducing the bond to fifty-two-hundred, but to also extend the completion date for an additional forty-five days, from September thirtieth to November fifteenth. Feels confident that, ever since, has already contacted the city. He feels very confident that the work will be done within those forty-five days and that the engineer will deliver the revised plan. So that is staff's recommendation.
All right. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Tina, has the utility pole been placed?
Pole is there.
Pole is there with the transformer.
I don't know about the transformer, but I know the pole is there. The question was, they were going to put up the light. So I don't know. Maybe the transformer is there. That I don't know.
In his communication of September twenty-sixth, relocated utility pole with the transformer is worth ten grand. Without having that, it would not be wise to reduce down the contingency to five grand. One item is ten alone.
I can't...
It was in place, and I don't have a problem. If we can get that resolved after the meeting through the planning director, I'm perfectly fine with bond reduction. But I would like to see both the pole and transformer in place in order to do that. Otherwise, I would go no for the reduction.
Certainly. Well, I see that, yeah. You're referring to the... Certainly. Well, I see that, yeah. You're referring to the request from the developer himself on the 26th, which I see obviously lists 10,000. I don't know how to explain that discrepancy between that and Mr. Rayom's letter of either that date or the next. So would the board be comfortable authorizing a bond reduction to the amount confirmed by the engineering department? I will draw specific attention to that, make sure that it was not something that was overlooked.
I see no reason why that wouldn't work.
Good. Then that's what I would recommend.
Make that recommendation, please.
Okay, so you make the motion to approve, the motion to incorporate the planning board director's recommendation on both the completion date being extended to November 15th, 2022, and that the amount of the surety will be reduced to the amount approved by the city engineer once the transformer issue is brought to his attention. That's your motion, right?
Yes.
Beautiful. Is there a second? Second by Carolyn. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four...
Abstain.
Five in favor, and one abstention.
Good.
Okay. Dave's abstaining. All right. That motion carries. All right. Next on the agenda is planning board director update.
Sure. So a couple of things in this regard. One is largely, it is the scheduling of some upcoming board meetings. As I mentioned earlier, our next meeting is scheduled for the 11th. Right now, the only item of business confirmed for that date would be the continuation of the 216 New Boston Street public hearing. Other than that, there is no other business known for the board for that meeting. So with that knowledge, and because the night before October 11th is a holiday, that will bump the city council's schedule, and they typically, even if meeting in committees, they sometimes use this room. Long way to saying that perhaps the board should consider holding its October 11th meeting virtually. If you did, it would allow us to obviously conduct the hearing, but it would also, you know, avoid any conflict with the meeting space.
Wonderful. Those sound like two good reasons to me. How do people feel? I see nodding of the heads. So we'll schedule good, so we'll schedule the October 11th planning board meeting for a virtual meeting starting at 7 o'clock in the evening.
And then just looking forward on the issue of scheduling meetings, first meeting, we'll have the meeting on October 11th, and then we have another meeting scheduled for October 25th. After that, the next meeting scheduled is November 8th, and that is going to be an election. So public meetings are strongly discouraged on the night of an election, and public hearings are prohibited. So we typically want to avoid meeting on that date. The second meeting in November is scheduled for November 22nd. That is two days before Thanksgiving. I don't know if anybody's schedule is affected by that. If not, we can leave the meeting on the 22nd, but we are going to need to figure out the 8th. Either we cancel that and meet just once on the 22nd, or we cancel maybe the 8th and the 22nd and move a meeting to the 15th, to kind of split the difference. I will say that if we do meet on the 15th, that too would need to be a virtual meeting, and right now there are no agenda items known, other than there might be a couple. There might be a bond reduction or a completion date expiration, but other than that, we don't have anything scheduled for that meeting.
Carolyn?
I'd be in favor of one meeting on the 15th. And what is the reason, just for clarification, that that needs to be on Zoom, virtual?
Well, the city council will have this room on the 15th for their regular meeting.
So we're just playing, you know, room tag?
Sure.
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
Room tag.
Hey, it explains it, right? Everyone understands those two words, right? So are people okay with November 15th as a virtual meeting? I'm seeing head nods from this side of the room. Carolyn is good. Okay. So why don't we do this? Why don't we cancel out on, we'll cancel the two scheduled meetings, the 8th and the 22nd, and we will reschedule for one planning board meeting on November 15th, and that will again be a virtual meeting. So we will have a virtual meeting in October. Is there another meeting in October?
On the 25th.
And right now, we have not made a decision as to that. So we can leave that in abeyance. If there's something that demands in-person presence, we can make that happen. And then on the 15th, we'll go virtual. All right. I see everyone's nodding, so I think we're good on that.
Good.
All right.
Last thing to mention, under the planning director update, is just a little update for you on the open space and recreation plan. As I mentioned at an earlier meeting, the city is undertaking another update of that plan. They're good for seven years. They're a great planning tool for the recreation department and the city council and the mayor to think about what improvements and projects to undertake and in what order and how much. So they're a great resource, but they also make us eligible for certain grant funds. So a good idea to have. One public meeting was held on September 15th. It was an initial workshop. Had about 30 people in attendance, which was a great showing. Lots of good feedback, and I provided you with some notes about what that feedback was. The following week, on a Thursday, again, we held a really a redo, a second version or a second showing of that first workshop. As it turned out, the September 15th date was in conflict with an event at the high school, an event in the schools that took a lot of potentially, you know, parents and others out of contention to attend that first meeting. So we held a second one here in the chamber on the 22nd, had about another dozen folks show up, more good comments, not all the same as what we'd heard originally, so it was definitely worthwhile. I'll forward you notes on that second September 22nd workshop in the next week or two, and then just let you know that we do have one more workshop scheduled on, I believe it's October 26th, a Thursday. We'll be holding a workshop that will be where we let folks know everything we heard at the first two workshops, what we are proposing to add, an update in the plan to reflect that feedback, and then get people's reaction to what our plan is. Hopefully, we will get some good feedback at that meeting. We'll then finalize the draft plan, and the planning board, under the law, actually is the one to whom you will be the ones that I come to present the open space plan and give you an explanation and ask you to accept it on the city's behalf. So I'll keep you updated and maybe send you a reminder of the October 26th workshop. And in the meantime, any board member or anybody out there listening at home, there is also on the recreation department website a survey that's available to take online, and we'd love to have as many people participate in that as possible. So that's my plug for that tonight.
Excellent.
And that's it.
All right. Thank you. So we are going to delay our minutes until next time, and then I guess we're to other business matters that may legally come before the board, not known at the time of posting. Are there any, Tina?
No.
All right. Then we are down to our final item, which is adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the September 27th planning board meeting at 8:58.
Excellent. A motion by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six in favor, none opposed. Thank you very much. We will see each other virtually on the 11th.